The next item on the agenda is public participation. Marilyn, do we have any public participation forms?
We do. I have one form and it's from Ann Hoagart. So if you'll sit at the end of the table.
How many minutes?
Five.
Okay, so, public participation is limited to five minutes to address the board. It's the practice, just so you know, that the board does not engage in a back and forth or respond. And ask that we maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people and please don't disrespect anyone by name. Public participation guidelines, section three state that forms must be submitted prior to the beginning of the portion of the meeting devoted to public comment. So if there's anyone else who wishes to make public comment, now is the time to submit your form. You have the floor.
Okay.
You got it?
Okay, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the Michigan Board of Education, I appreciate the opportunity to address you today. My name is Ann Hoagart and I am a product of Michigan Public Schools, from kindergarten through my bachelor's, teacher and administrator certificates, masters and doctoral degrees. I have been a teacher of Japanese language for almost thirty years, as well as a professor of education, graduate college dean, school board member, parent and taxpayer. I'm here to share with you my concerns about one of the candidates for state superintendent position, based on my experience with Dr. Randy Leapa. If the state board's top priority for the superintendent position were sound fiscal management of its bottom line, I might be more comfortable with the idea of placing a CPA with no K-12 teaching experience in the top position in Michigan's education system. But reading the job description, several words and priorities jumped out at me. Words like integrity, transparency, sensitive to diverse and ethnic populations, and willing and able to work with an elected school board in an open and supportive way convinced me to make the one hour drive here to share with you some facts that may not be common knowledge. In 2010, through a series of unusual circumstances, I found myself volunteering as a school board member for a brand-new public charter school, an innovative dual-immersion Japanese-English elementary school, for which Livonia Public School District would serve as both charter authorizer and landlord. This unusual arrangement was facilitated by Dr. Leapa, Livonia Public School Superintendent. All five board members were new to public school board service, and we were unaware that Dr. Leapa's dissertation research was about how traditional school districts could use Michigan's school choice law for their financial benefit. Nor did we suspect that our fledgling school might be seen as an opportunity to test his theories in real life, using a real school with real teachers and hundreds of real children. Our school community was ethnically diverse, with a minority of white students and many young immigrant families just learning how systems here work, all eager to give their children the opportunity for bilingual education from a young age. For four years, our school paid rent and an authorizer's fee to Livonia Public School District. In return, Dr. Leapa made cursory visits to the school a few times a year and occasional appearances at our board meetings. He was aware that the school had been founded using hundreds of thousands of dollars in federal grants legally restricted to charter schools, while his own district was facing shrinking enrollment and million-dollar budget deficits. Dr. Leapa had a pre-existing business relationship with our principal. He supported him, but our parents and board members did not. When our board reported concerns about the principal's job performance, Dr. Leapa accused our board of overstepping our bounds and needing additional training. When the performance of our principal, essentially our employee, did not improve, Dr. Leapa held clandestine meetings with that individual and then publicly proposed a merger of the charter school with his district and his plan to hire our principal as his own. As a superintendent, Dr. Leapa should have known such plans to be highly improper and fraught with legal and ethical issues. We declined the so-called merger. Just as our school's enrollment had grown to almost two hundred students, Dr. Leapa suddenly informed us that his district would not renew our school building lease. The reason? His district had plans to repurpose the building for, guess what? An innovative Japanese-English bilingual immersion elementary school. In short, he took the successful product of federal grants and countless volunteer hours to boost enrollment numbers in his district. Secret meetings were held between members of the Livonia Teachers Union and our teaching staff. Promises were made as his district began to headhunt our teachers. Ultimately, the union contract contained a separate pay scale, so the teachers would receive below-market pay to make the new school of choice more lucrative. Within weeks, Dr. Leapa's district revoked our school's charter, never raising any academic, ethical, or fiscal issues, but simply for not having a building in which to operate. As Dr. Leapa destroyed our school community, he added insult to injury by making disingenuous statements to the media about acting in the best interests of our children and families. In my opinion, Dr. Leapa is a smooth political operator who knows just how far he can push the law and what to say to justify any action. However, he's not a trustworthy person, nor someone who should be in charge of children and their education. For our next superintendent, please select someone with a true passion for public education and the human communities it involves. I'm happy to provide additional details upon request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other forms, Marilyn?
I do not have any other forms.
Okay. At this point, the state board of education will stand in recess for fifteen minutes. We will reconvene at roughly 3:25. Oh, sorry, Tom. Looks like we're all back, so it is now 3:35 and a quorum of the board is present. Next on our agenda is discussion and identification of finalists. First of all, before we get into this, I just want to say once again, thank you to the candidates who have put their names in the running for the state superintendent. As you all have seen, we've had five exceptionally wonderful candidates. It will be a very difficult decision to narrow down to three, and it will probably be a much more difficult decision to narrow it down to one. But that is our job and what we need to do, and so we are looking forward to moving forward with the process. I also want to say that, as part of the process, we received a number of comments from individuals associated with the candidates, expressing their opinions and their thoughts and their support, and we thank them as well for that information and appreciate the feedback that we have received. I want to also reiterate that the pink sheets that you have in front of you, the ranking sheet, is not a sole determinant. It's going to be used for us to have a conversation about who we think should move on to the next round of interviews. With that being said, let me just say, I think there's two ways for us to do this before I introduce Mike Collins. One way is to do from a top-down perspective, which would be to have a conversation on who we think the top two or three candidates are. The other way is to do a bottom-up, which is more of a process of elimination. So to identify if we agree on a bottom one or two candidates that we can eliminate. I think that might be a quicker way to do it, although I'm not guaranteeing that. With that being said, we can leave it up to the board how you want to do it. However, I just want to caution that I don't want to get in a scenario where we are identifying what appears to be an heir apparent. So we're all saying, hey, I think this person is the best candidate. We definitely want this person to move forward. I don't want there to be any perception that we have a number-one candidate in mind and the rest of this is just kind of a peremptory exercise. That is not the case. We are only halfway through our process, and the second-round interview really will identify the number-one candidate. This process here is to identify two to three top candidates. We are not in any way suggesting that there is one outstanding and four that come in behind. So with us today is Mike Collins from Rain Associates. He's the regional search associate who has been helping us with the search. And Mike, would you like to add any thoughts?
No, probably more reiteration than add, if I may, for just two minutes, real quickly. First of all, five in two days, I understand you're tired. And having sat there, I appreciate that. Hopefully, this is challenging and difficult. Our real goal all along was always to make this a difficult decision, because the quality of what you're really talking to and to shrink that down becomes a real challenge. Ultimately, your eyes, ears, brains, and heart are going to settle primarily in the area of what seems to be best fits. Because most of their professional pedigree, if you will, qualities and characteristics, though they're different in each one, they probably all could fill a general bill of being a very logical candidate for state superintendent. I appreciated Cassandra your statement. Typically, when we use these type of matrix or forms that provide some sense of forced prioritization, or some would call it ranking, ideally, they serve you as a guidepost. This isn't just a matter of keeping score, because you really want this to be a consensus process on who moves forward, not just based on a score. They become a good reference point for you. So if we're talking about this and this, well, just so we all know, where were we getting the score on this? You know, that kind of thing is its asset to you, but this is basically a real consensus determination by you as a body. Lastly, I would just urge, as Cassandra brought up, it's not even just an appearance. If you're going to legitimately look at May 7th and say, we have finalists, then they need to be finalists. And that's very important. And on the other side, if there are some that don't quite fit from your vantage point for this position, it doesn't at all reflect on their qualifications, number one. And number two is, there may be another place at another time that they will fit extremely well, and we just need to leave them all those positive opportunities to pursue as such. Otherwise, Cassandra, you know, we're ready to proceed, as you are. Keep in mind that I have no participation in this from an opinion standpoint on any candidate, deliberately so. I don't live in the state of Michigan, and I'm not one of you. I will tell you that, but if we can be helpful from a consensus building, facilitation, discussion, movement, that's what we're here for. And lastly, just given our time we've spent together, you operate so well as a group, I have every expectation I'll probably be fairly quiet. And not just because I can't get a word in edgewise. But no, thank you very much, and we really are here to help with Cassandra's issues.
Pam, did you have something you want to add?
And I don't know where this goes, but maybe before you become quiet, there were two candidates, and I will just state my opinion that I agree with going bottom up. But before doing that, there were two candidates who were vying for other positions, and I would like to know, and they were finalists in those positions, so.
One, you're referring to Brenda Casilius. Who's the other one?
Eric Thomas.
I thought Eric was not a finalist.
He's not. He was to be, they shrunk it again, and he didn't make it.
Okay.
So we have one candidate who is a finalist in Boston.
And I'm happy to update you on schedule.
Yeah, I wanted to get an update on those.
So between the challenge of flights and the fact that she's one of three finalists for the city of Boston, I mean, it's public knowledge. The reason she had to Skype in was because not being able to really completely make the planes work. And it's not that she couldn't reschedule Boston. The challenge was, and for those of you that are aware, when a lot of cities, when they do superintendent searches, have one day for the finalists, where they have like nine meetings. She had nine different groups. That's what couldn't be rescheduled. That was the challenge. So one of the candidates was there the day before, she was there yesterday, there's one today. But I will tell you, there's a very strong likelihood that by the end of next week, they will have made a decision. The other two candidates are strong. This is not a given in her case. She certainly has qualities for the job, but you, depending on what you choose to do with her, may have some effect on whether you have two or three finalists. It could have an effect, if you choose to have it that way. But that's where she is right now. She's back in Minneapolis, waiting to hear, like the others are, and that's where it stands. I do need to tell you for the number of times, there wasn't one that was a bigger priority to her than the other. But I think she's very much a split applicant. So her not being able to be here was not at all a reflection on which one was more important. It was which agenda might she have an opportunity to have a little different. The fact that if she's selected to move on, she has a chance to come back and meet with you, and that was a very big factor in her decision-making.
Thank you.
Will we have a discussion about which way to go as far as bottom-up or top-down later or now?
We'll do that now.
Okay, because I would rather say who I liked to move on than who I don't like to move on. So, and I think we're still going to have the same issue with number three, whether we have a three or not, whether you go bottom-up or top-down. And I don't think it'd be, I mean, I would envision going around and saying, Tom, and I would say this one, this one, and this one, and then we add them all up, and the top two would move on, and the third one, we'd have to decide, or somebody would have to decide, or we would, whether they had enough points to move on. I don't think it would take hardly any, I think it would take twenty minutes or ten minutes. I don't know. I mean, because if you go, unless people are going to pass or something, but once you're going to give three names, and then you're done. So I don't know that it would take any time at all. It just would be who I want as opposed to who I don't want. That just seems like that.
I'm not going to argue with you.
I don't know.
I feel the same way. I want to deal with my top three versus my bottom, whatever.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Okay. I see some people are still adding up. Do you guys need time to do that?
I mean.
You don't have to add them up.
Yeah, we can just.
I'll just tell you who I, yeah.
Go around, and people can say their top three and just put a mark by the, does that make sense?
You.
I've got it.
Well, that's what I was just going to ask you.
Oh, you've got it? You've got that. Thank you.
Okay, good.
Actually, this list, this will stay with me.
Okay.
Do you want to, one last question. Do you want to do three, or do you want to give people the option to just give two and decide, and then give three if you want to give three? I don't know.
No, it has to be consistent.
I think we should do three, and then we can narrow it down from there if we have to, but, yeah. I want to avoid this idea that, you know, we're all in consensus about someone.
Okay, yeah, and I wanted to iterate, Cassandra, or President Ulrich, that I agree with you that, and we could even, I don't know if we can talk about it, but these were good questions, and I appreciate what you did in compiling them, but I really am hoping that, you know, nobody's going to come out on top for me, even if they have more votes today. I don't think that's representative, because I think next meeting will be very rich in back and forth, I hope. If somebody says I can't, then it's really hard, because I really, there's different questions I want with different people, and I'll try, I think we can try to be as fair as we want, but I want to dive deep. So somebody who might get more votes, that doesn't necessarily mean anything to me at all, you know, because I really think I'm going to understand them better on May 7th. That's my thought.
Okay.
Couple medical orders.
No, I think we should start with Tom, since he's the one who wants to do it. So here's what we're going to do. In no particular order, you will name your top three candidates, and Mike will keep track of how much, how many votes, if you will, each candidate gets, and at the end of that, we will see if a three emerge at the top, and then we can debate on whether or not we think that is the correct three. Sound good?
She wanted to make sure that she understood it, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Tom, do you want to start?
Sure. I would select Eric, Randy, and Janice. Is it Janice?
Janice.
Yeah.
Lupe?
Randy, Michael, and Janice. Well, according to my tally, that's what I'm going to say.
Michael, Janice, Brenda.
Tiffany?
Wait a second.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Michael, Janice, Brenda.
Good, good. I'm with you.
Okay. Tiffany?
I would like to hear more from Eric Thomas and Brenda Casilius. I don't have a third person.
Well, there we go, then. Let's just get after it.
Well, I think, yes, if you had to choose between the other three, which one would you choose?
I would not in good conscience give the other three my vote for this particular position.
You are not giving them your vote for this particular position. You're giving them the vote to move forward for another interview.
Two. I have two people.
All right, so the process is already broken down.
Then I go back, and I just have two.
No, no, no. See, and this is the problem right here.
You're going to have to let me.
Problem. If you do that, then Lupe's going to go back and change her vote, and then someone else is going to change their vote.
That has nothing to do with me.
You're part of the board, and the board has decided this is the process. We can't move three people forward, even still?
No, because it weights things differently.
Everybody has to vote the same.
Does that mean somebody will get less votes, and, I mean, it just doesn't work unless we all vote three.
I'm plonking.
Did you realize, though, that, like, you can have people who tie on this? Right. So let me just say.
I'm not having that.
Can I just say again? This is the beginning of the conversation. It doesn't mean that the three will move forward. It means that once we can deal with this, then we start debating whether or not we want to have two to three move forward based on the score. But if we don't all follow the same rules, then it is not fair for anybody.
I don't feel comfortable with the three Michigan candidates.
Then you can argue that when we do our debate.
Yeah, I think the question is, Laura, of those three, which would be your preference?
Right.
None. And I seriously was trying to find at least one, seriously. And I don't feel comfortable with any of those three people, literally.
It should be reasonable. We should accept that.
I really wanted to. I don't know any of them. I don't have any emotional connection or anything to anybody, but they said things during their interviews that gave me serious red flags.
Then when we get to the next part, you can argue that. But if we already throw out the process.
Randy, Leapa.
Thank you. Nikki? Eric Thomas, Janice Swift, and Randy Leapa.
I just want to say, I thought they were all great candidates, and I think any of them would be great as superintendent. So, but my, and it was hard, and they're all very close, but my top are based on their experiences, because I think these people I'm picking have a depth of experience more than the other two, is Brenda Casilius, Randy Leapa, and Michael Rice.
Wow, this is really hard.
Can you say that? I'm sorry.
The top three, the first three. Brenda, Randy, and Michael.
Good. Thank you.
This is really hard, and I just want to correct what I said. And Tom, I'm happy that you changed the course, because I think I used some wording there that I won't repeat when I was saying the process that we would use. And I think that, to Michelle's point, all of the people that we've interviewed over the past Monday and today were great candidates and should be proud of their work that they've done. And so this is, for me, more of who I think is a fit, and it is really hard, because I could do four. I could easily do four. And so to help you, maybe Tiffany, I will do Brenda. Oh, boy. Michael. I was going to help you by trying to cancel out something, but I don't even know if I can. I hear you, Cassandra. I hear you.
That was not an impatient.
It's very difficult.
Just getting ready.
I think I'm going to say, hmm, it's hard. I'm going to cry.
That's okay.
I think I'm going to say. I think I'm going to say Andy.
Okay, so Pamela, I have Brenda, Michael, and Randy?
Yes. Okay. And then for mine, again, I will reiterate that all of them are very, very close, so it was definitely a tough decision. But my three, I would say, would be Brenda, Michael, and Janice. So now the debate.
That doesn't make it easy.
Yep.
So let me just go around one more time to make sure I got everybody correctly. Tom, I have Randy, Janice, and Eric. Correct?
Yes.
Lupe, I have Randy, Michael, and Janice.
Exactly.
Judy, I have Brenda, Michael, and Janice.
Correct.
Tiffany, I have Brenda, Randy, and Eric. Nikki, I have Randy, Janice, and Eric.
Correct.
We just double-checked it here. Michelle, I have Brenda, Randy, and Michael. Pamela, I have Brenda, Randy, and Michael.
And Janice. I'm sorry. She's just messing with me. No. I'm sorry.
You messed with me. And Cassandra, I have Brenda, Michael, and Janice.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's where we were.
So we are at.
We can eliminate one.
Well, and then can we go back around?
Yeah, so.
Do we take one out and go back around?
Yeah. So if I am, well, I'm going to let you. What is your?
You want to know what I have?
Yes.
Just by checkmarks?
Yep.
I have Brenda with five, Randy with six, Michael with five, Janice with five, and Eric with four.
I have Eric three.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, three. Very correct. Okay.
Good thing we're all checking.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we have one with six, we have three that are tied with five, and we have one with three. Can we agree uh, to remove Eric?
But then what would that mean? We all have to choose three? What you could do?
Well, the next time maybe you could choose two and that way you're, you're not choosing someone, well, actually if Eric's not there.
But would you elevate Randy and then choose two of the remaining three?
That's, that's an approach.
I think that would ameliorate out, well, actually it wouldn't for, for Tiffany.
Okay, I didn't quite follow that one.
Well, if you said Randy moves on, Eric doesn't, and the three fives run off, then we vote two.
Three fives run off, okay.
And we vote two of those, I don't know.
So we could do that, or we could do four as a runoff?
Runoff and we all choose three.
Or we choose two, I mean whatever, I don't know, what makes the most sense?
Two, so we can have three, because we have Randy, so we need two more.
No, she's saying don't.
No, I'm saying have a runoff of the four. But it, we can do it either way.
Yeah, you can, you can go back and look at all four, or you can look at the three fives.
Hmm, well, I think, I think if Randy has six, I think we should let it be and then we go to the other numbers.
Randy really has five, because I don't want to vote for him, I just had to say somebody.
Gets irrelevant.
So can we vote on how we want to do this?
It's not a runoff.
Because I would rather do all four. You'd rather do all four.
But then you're going to choose three of the four?
Yeah.
So you're going to force Tiffany to choose two that she doesn't want instead of one?
I can do two of the four. I, I could do two of the four. Take one out, do two of the four.
You can do two or three?
No, I can't. It's got to be one or the other.
Two of the four.
Oh, vote for two of the four, really? I'm not sure how that'll work. And, and we take the top three?
Now we do it Tiffany's way, I don't know.
Okay, I guess we could do that.
It doesn't, I just, anyway. You should get to vote for who you want to vote for.
Well, it's got to be a system that, that works.
So even if, so let's say even if you hadn't voted for, for Randy, we would still have four that are tied at five. And we still have one who only had three. So can we agree first, before we even move on, can we agree to eliminate the one?
I don't, because that's the person that I wanted.
Well, the majority don't.
I would agree to take out the one.
Me too.
I wanted him, or I wanted him to move on.
Yeah, I really appreciate it.
Well, somewhere along the line, it's a consensus in the will of the group, I mean, that's where you're heading.
So for those of you who wanted Eric, do you want to argue your case?
I think we could at least talk about the good points that he brought to the table, so that it's something we can carry forward in our discussions with whoever does.
Okay.
Acquire the position, so I think.
Like to speak?
I'm going to get my yellow sheet.
Okay.
But wait, why are we doing this? Because some, is he, is it possible that he's going to remain?
Right, right now, we're just having a conversation, so.
So, I can go over what I was thinking for the whole thing, like.
Okay.
My, my metrics is, you know, I'm assuming that, because they, we, they were asked a lot of educational questions. I'm assuming at the level that everybody is on, that they have a good foundation in education. So to me, that was a, a given. What I did like about Michigan candidates is that they have institutional knowledge. I tried to do like a swat kinda in my head of the candidates. So people have strengths that I saw, but the weaknesses um, or the red flags for the Michigan candidates is kind of what made me not want them. But um, I was looking for somebody who, who is innovative, who is forward-thinking, um, who has turnaround skills and experience, who is a change agent. Willingness to collaborate, which it seemed like all of them are collaborators. Understanding of systems, who were concerned about all kids. And that came up quite a bit. Where literacy, of course, was big for me, um, with the emphasis especially in early childhood. And somebody who works well with others, but who would be able to push back against the status quo when needed. I feel like Michigan is in a horrible position nationally. And we need somebody who is going to be able to come in, who has the experience with a diverse background, who has experience turning things around. My concern with, can I say my concerns with the Michigan people to start out with? The floor, thank you. My concern with Janice Swift was that when she, when she stated that minority students, uh, or African-American students specifically, she said. Special ed students and um, English language learners, that they, that the graduation rates had not improved. That was a huge red flag for me, because you are not either in touch with your most vulnerable in your district, or you are, or you don't have the know-how. So that was a big red flag for me. I think that Ann Arbor is a great district, but in comparison to the state, it, it doesn't necessarily give her the experience to really do change management and, and to turn things around, so. Randy, Lee, how do you say his last name? Leapa, thank you. I think on paper, Randy is really good and I feel like he would be the natural person to go to the next step. But I felt like Randy, I didn't hear a lot of um, I need a change agent. I didn't feel like Randy, I feel like he's going to hold the status quo. I didn't hear a lot of him wanting to come in and make changes. I felt like he, he, he felt like we had a good structure, good bones, and we're just going to, you know, do a few things in the classroom to ramp things up. But I didn't get where he wants to come in and really change things around. I will say with Brenda, I was, I would have liked to see more from her. I don't feel like she brought a lot to the table specifically to Michigan, but I feel like she has experience. I would call her back just so that I could, like he said, do a deeper dive, or somebody said, do a deeper dive. So I would like to do a deeper dive to see, and I know the challenges she had with interviewing with both states. Wish, I mean, you can't fully concentrate on one state to give your best. So I would have given her a second chance to do a deeper dive with her. What I did like about Eric Thomas was that he sounded like a change agent. He kept talking about turnover, um, that's what his background is, is in. I wanted to hear more about that. What I did not like about him was um, that he doesn't have a lot of um, time in the positions that he's held. So that, I wanted to hear more about that, why have you moved so much? But I, I do like the fact that his whole resume is focused on making a change and that's what we need here in Michigan. That was kind of my, my thinking.
So Eric seemed like a really interesting person, but he just didn't seem like he was ready for this level of a position. Again, he's had, he's been at a state level in Georgia for like a year. And not, and not in a comprehensive way, but just as a turnaround officer, so maybe we should can, you know. I, I'm not sure, I would love to have him um, to, to learn more about. I was, a lot of concerns that I had was um, when he brought up the teacher evaluation, which is direct opposite of what a board has expressed. That he passed a bill with a raised level of forty-five to fifty percent of the teacher evaluation based on standardized tests. I also, um, the focus of the turnaround seems to be on high tests, on changing the test scores. Where the others had a more comprehensive view on what was a good school, not just schools with good test scores or gaps on high stakes test scores. You know, it's, it's um, so his, to me, he was, he was dynamic, he had some interesting ideas. But I think there were some issues that um, were different than where the board has been on policy. He's just, it, it was counter to a number of things that I think. He also had no idea what ISDs were, or sort of our internal structure in the state. And we need somebody who can go out. Like I said, I think he's um, was really uh, had some interesting ideas. I love the idea of him collaborating with those teams like he had in Cincinnati, I thought that was awesome, an awesome idea, which I would love to see here.
EIPs.
But um, my fear is that it's um, you know, he seemed to also support the A through F, which we are not in support of. So those were the things, so as a person, he seemed, he was um, highly motivated and capable, but the policies he was espousing were not in line with ours. So that's mine.
I would say that um, I hear you there, but I also believe that he espoused those because the people, that that was his job.
Yeah.
So that was my uh, understanding through, because I wrote down the teacher evaluation, but I believe uh, in my concern there, but I believe that it was because it was his job. I really liked the EIP in that you couldn't get another flavor of the month reform unless you had a majority of, or you know, you got eight teachers, you know, you had to. Teachers that were equal, not a third, not a fourth, but equal. I mean, you had to get at least one teacher and then if they, you know, you'd be, you'd be in the doghouse if you were that one teacher and everybody else was against it. So I really liked that, I really liked the, the answer on the appeals. I mean, to put a panel with parents, teacher, and ask, you know, and he was concluding, I don't know if it's because he hasn't been in the systems long enough or something, but I like the idea that he was going to include parents and a teacher and a state board member, I don't know if it would, how that would exactly look. But I liked, uh, it seemed like a more transparent and uh, I understand your change. But I, you know, the, the grassroots has seen changes all the time, so I think the teachers and everybody, they want to do something that, we need to do something different, I agree. But it's got to be, you know, I mean, we don't want to up, I mean, there's always a change, like every, so many years, we got another change, they got to redo their whole, you know, it just is, it's getting tiring, I think. At the classroom.
Go ahead, I mean. Okay, so um, and I think, I, I think that, I think that he's qualified to be a superintendent of um, of a, of a state, of state public education. But I think, uh, I'm with Michelle, um, there were two things that stuck out to me and it was around assessment. I'm looking, trying to find it on my, my sheet and, and it seemed like it was more than what was being pushed down. It was that he felt that that was something that, that was important and that accountability and, I mean, how schools, uh, he believed in high stakes assessment is what I gathered. There was another piece, oh shoot, there was another piece that talked about, that he mentioned that almost to me would have been um, contradictory to partnership model. It was more that he was for, he was, sounded like he was ready to get in there and, and the states take some control of schools. And I'll have to find that.
I think that dealt with his response to local districts and ISDs.
Oh, okay, well, maybe that wasn't there. So there, you know, I, I like that he talked a lot about some, some of the health aspects, whole child wraparound, I like, he talked about mental health. Um, I have PBIS and restorative justice here, um, but he really seemed to really favor SAT and NATE more. And, and there was a, a response that he said something, SA grad, when, when Tiffany, when you asked him about grad rates, um, he, there was a response there that was, I, I don't know, I have a question here. But anyway, so I, I just thought that it was just uh, in, in conflict with some of our priorities and goals and the, and I de, I definitely heard an urgency there, but I just saw him moving urgently in a little bit different direction than, than what we've stated that, that we would want to go. But um, he seemed very talented and, and seemed like he would be able to, to lead a, a community or, or a state. But I just thought there's divergence from what we've, we've expressed here.
I'll, I'll just be short, but um, I felt like he, one thing he had that none of the other candidates had, which was, it was a striking difference, was really his passion and the heart that he brought to the table. When he talked about how we can't keep giving away years for kids and um, the, the picture in the middle of the table that he put of the kids constantly bringing everybody back around in the conversation that what we're having here at the table every time we come is about kids. And I do think, and there are some things, I think you said that I, I'm wondering in other, you know, I think we probably all picked out different things from different candidates, right?
Yeah.
Um, I think Janice did eventually say that they are rising. I think she was saying that for a period of time they were stagnant, but then they began to rise, that's what I thought I heard.
Not for those particular.
Okay, I, I guess I thought I heard that, but this is what, why it's good that it's on tape, because then we can make sure we're dealing with it.
And that's what I wish we could run the tape back and see the interviews again.
And maybe even they have an opportunity to rebuttal facts with their district data. But, but what I think that Eric brought to the table is not even based on data. I feel like when we guys, when we all sit here and, and people talk about um, our partnership districts, I mean, there's something that you cannot quantify. And that is heart and going into districts that need to turn around and really adding value to who these kids are and their lives. So he, he brought that and that was just who he was, it like oozed out of him. So for me, I'm, I'm just feeling like if we're not going to choose him, if he isn't going to move forward, that's something that needs to be easily cultivated in the next superintendent.
Any other thoughts?
I just want to follow up, um, I.
You're right.
Many of the other candidates expressed their opposition to A through F and their opposition to some of these reforms. He never expressed any opposition to it. And he had an opportunity to, but he didn't. So if, if it was truly pushed on him, you know, then he could at least express some way that it was his job to do it. But I, it seemed he was very focused on making an F school, a B school, and these schools are, it's based on high-stakes standardized tests.
He said that, he did articulate that he believed in.
Yeah.
I, I.
Can I interrupt too? Because I think he said something about them increasing.
He said he took an F school to a B.
Yes, right. Then he later said something specific about test scores.
And, and that he, he felt that that um, uh, I'll, I'll find it somewhere, but I, I thought I wrote it, I might have just been listening.
Let me just say, it is unusual, I understand that for me to say that I would liked him to move on, because yeah, I'm the, probably one of the most diametrically opposed to the high stakes testing. I think it was probably, and that's why I'd want him back, because I would have loved to have dove into that, because I was very concerned. But I think it's probably the air he breathes, I think we are a very unique board that is willing to stand up and say, those aren't, you know, the measures that are, you know, those, actually, there's negative things when you do that. Most boards, in most states probably don't. So I think it was probably the air that his leaders and that they breathe. And so for all I know, it would be refreshing for him to say, you know, I'd love to have pushed back, was there anything negative about these when you turned them around? And, you know, what about, what if this board wanted you to do something else? I did think that he above all the others, and I'm not saying anything negative, but would, would uh, I don't want to say, would follow our lead on things. I don't know that he, I think that he, I gather that if we said this is what we want, that I think that he would do it. And, and filter it through the organization.
I don't necessarily get that, that he would do it, but, and I, and I'll say a hundred percent, some things maybe. Because he was saying that he wants to listen and collaborate with people, but I don't necessarily get that from his personality, that he'll just, which is one thing that I kind of liked, is that he, he doesn't seem like somebody that's just going to tell the line. I will say this, none of the candidates right now, I, could I see serving as superintendent. The two that I named are ones that I want to do deeper dives with to try to find out more information. But there's nobody right now that I could say, I feel like amazed me to the point that I could see them serving in that seat. I wish we had more candidates, more qualified candidates to have a pool from.
So I will just add my two cents, I agree, I was concerned about the um, the focus on letter grades. Whether that's his option or not, um, that's the world he lives in. I, I was also concerned about his, his mentioning of vouchers and that we had to have this conversation. But what really concerns me the most about him is he's only been in his present position for a year and a half and he's already looking for another job. That tells me a lot. He's only had, he only received his PH, earned his PhD in two thousand sixteen, so that is very new for that. He has moved around, um, you know, he, he's been here for a year and a half. He was about five years maybe at University of Virginia, two years at um, Cincinnati as the chief innovation officer. He was at Cincinnati more than that, but in different positions. So I, I just feel like he's in a position right now where it's too soon for him to make a move this significant. And that's my concern, and, and if he does make this move, how long is he going to be here, what's next? And, and while he's here, are we going to be philosophically on the same page? So those I say were my major issues. Do I think he's, he has a lot of potential? Absolutely. I just think that the timing is not ideal from my perspective.
Yeah, well, are people done? I don't want to. Just procedurally, in, in reality, you're eventually going to have, you're going to have to make decisions, you're going to have to make cuts. You have certain clear-cut things that have already surfaced. Three is a lot different than six. Wait, we just did this. So I, to me, good, bad, and different, this is kind of where you start. So I, to me, good, bad, or indifferent, this is kind of where you start. The other thing I will say, in whatever it's worth category, there's somebody that's, that's appealing, and they may not come, they may not make it this time. There may be a position in this department that you might want to tell the next person that, hey, you may want to take a look at this. You know, I mean, you have all kinds, you have a myriad of options with good quality people, even if they don't turn out to be the one. So I just hasten to add that, and I've seen it happen on numerous occasions. So just as a, you know, but you're going to have to start making decisions, because you've still got one more hard one anyway. You know, this, if you were talking about the last thing you had to decide, then that's fine. You got, you got other things. I, I think i- if you concur with that, and if and when you're ready to say, if you're ready to say Eric doesn't move along, then it begs the next question. And then the next question is, you just take the three fives and pick two, or do you take all four and pick three? And I'm really going to suggest that, Cassandra, and not just two, because depending on who those people are may depend on, you can shrink it after that, you can have a third round. It's a question of how, what puts you in that position.
So has anyone changed their mind or their vote about Eric based on this conversation? One way or the other? Hearing no changes, then I, I think, are we good with eliminating him as the number five? Okay, now, moving on.
You want to go around the table just to make sure that, that everybody's, is, I want to voice.
You want to do a roll count, roll call vote based on, on dropping Eric Thomas from our list?
If you want, everybody that we talked about, so that way there won't be any discrepancies later.
Okay.
Alphabetical, Michelle. Okay, so.
Yes, we're dropping him.
We're dropping him, yes, for dropping him. McMillan?
Okay.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Q?
Yes.
Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Snyder? Hilli?
I'm the same.
So it's a no?
No.
Albert?
Yes.
Seven one.
Okay, all right, so now we're down to four.
Okay, who are the four?
Four, the four are Brenda, Randy, Michael, and Janice. The question I have for you, Madam President, is do you want to take six and move it, or do you want to, want to run all four? I think that's your next question.
Thoughts?
We want to what?
Do you want to take all four and decide based on that four? Or do you want to have Randy be like separate, and then we do the other three?
This is what I would like.
Okay.
Well, I, I think, given the reluctance of Tiffany's vote, I think we should stick to the four and go for three and do, like, take the time to have that deeper dive to have more, you know, deeper questions. So I, my inclination is to do the four and get it to three.
Why don't we go around, yeah, go around and say three or four? Tom?
Well, but then are we, are we going to vote for two or three if they're scored?
One decision at a time.
I am ambivalent. I could do either way.
Okay, Lupe?
Three.
Judy?
Four.
Tiffany?
Four.
Nikki?
Four.
Four?
Four.
Going to pick, of the four, you're going to pick?
I say four. Yeah.
Now, do we vote for two or do we vote for three?
We're going to go with four.
Right, but do we vote for two or do we vote for three?
We vote for three because there's four. Vote for three?
All right. We're going to force Tiffany to vote for two. I mean, I'm okay if we have 16 votes, and somebody doesn't get four, then they're out.
I'm like really hard between two.
Well, that's, I mean, that's the other, I suppose that's the other way you can do it, is you could take all four of your votes and put it on one candidate. I, I was going to ask that.
I was trying. That prioritization starts to be real.
Could people just name their top person at this point?
Well, so, we're trying to get away from that, because we, we need to narrow it down to three. And the last thing we want is for one person to look like they're the candidate.
It's pretty clear from his last vote that nobody is the candidate.
But that's because we voted for three, not one.
I think we should stay consistent with that, because if we then move to the next round as such.
You can then decide if you want to shrink it from two to, from three to two after you have three.
Wow, I don't know.
I think we need the flip chart and the little sticky.
Trying so hard to avoid the stickers.
No, 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 Pam.
It's got to be the algorithm.
Okay, so we have four candidates, and you get three votes, and please vote for three, and.
So now, yeah, because now I've got to vote for somebody I didn't want to vote for the first one too.
So who are the three?
The three are Brenda Casilius.
There's four.
There's four, I'm sorry, yeah, Brenda Casilius, Randy Leepa, Leepa, I hope I'm saying it right, Michael Rice, and Janice Swift.
Oh, I, okay, let me just ask this question, and maybe it's been asked already. What if we just go around and get the first person, her top pick first?
Because then we're in.
I just said the same thing. No, you, is that what you said?
Well, I thought, well, you, I might want to ask, why don't we put all four into one, or put.
Right.
Why don't we compromise and put two instead of three or one?
We could do two.
Yeah, but here's, here's the challenge, depending on who surfaces. There's a real, there's a real deliberate process in this, and, and I'm only doing it from a process standpoint. I have no preferences in persons. But the bottom line is, if your two involves someone who's a candidate elsewhere, you stand the chance of only having one left. If you do three.
No, no, no. Vote for two, but take the top three.
Oh.
No, we'd vote for two and we'd take the top three.
Yeah, and I, and I was just, my thought of having the first one first is that we just get that one out of the way.
The math won't work out, but okay.
But I guess that doesn't work.
Yeah, it would, because as long as they all four don't get four, then somebody's going to be dropped due to.
So, up to the group.
And that way Nikki and I and, and Tiffany wouldn't have to vote for somebody we didn't vote for the last time.
But you're still going to have to vote for two.
Right.
And it's the top three.
But we're, I think we're going to end up with the same vote count.
Four, four, four.
I think we are two. I'm not a math whiz.
If you really want to get to two, I think you go down to three and then you go down to two.
Well, not necessarily, somebody could switch, somebody converts to someone.
And they have two people who are, who have to, you have three people who, who have to vote for someone different, so not necessarily.
There's no motion on the table, but I'm looking at you.
Are we running this poll without you for a second?
No, we're all laughing and crying, so it's not.
So, let's make a decision.
I want to say something. I, I can never vote for Brenda because she wasn't here.
I'm going to agree with that.
I cannot, I cannot vote for her.
Okay.
So.
You don't have to, so if we do three.
She's already eliminated in my book.
Okay, well, that's one of eight, so let's do vote for three. We could always, once we have the vote, deliberate again after the fact, but I'm afraid if we only vote for two, then we're going to have a lot of ties.
Well, we'd have to have complete ties, because I thought if you, as long as one person doesn't get four, the only way we'd have a lot of ties is if everybody got four. Four, 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 and four, there's 16 votes, so you'd have to, so I don't know if that would happen, but I like, if it happens, then we'd go to three, but if it doesn't happen, then we're done.
Doesn't happen, we're done. I'd say the third, three, then two.
If we each had two votes, then, you know, the only way that we wouldn't be done is if it's four, 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 and four.
And I would like more discussion about.
We'll still have more discussion.
Yeah. About candidates, you know, I, because I'm, I'm willing to be open-minded and persuaded.
Vote for three, talk about it.
Yeah.
Okay, but, I mean, I've got something set in my head, but I'm also willing to listen, and.
So can we do the vote, we vote for three, and then we have conversation afterwards?
And then allow for possible changes.
And we can allow for another vote, depending on the conversation. Okay? Okay, so we have four candidates, you have three votes. This time we will start with Pam. Yes, you are tallying, correct?
Right.
Do you want to skip, and we'll go to Michelle?
Yeah, Pam is not ready, are you?
Yeah, go ahead.
Same as last time, so Brenda, Randy, and Michael, and I would like to just add that I think the fact that Brenda is on high demand shows that she is, you know, the fact that she's sought after and is a finalist in Boston is a, is a sign that she's got some really good talent, recognized talents. That's my flip side of that, but Brenda, Randy, Michael.
Thanks.
I'm going to say Randy, Michael, and Janice, and I do, I'm hoping not to have to go here, but I was very, I don't know if offended, offended is the right word, but, you know, she mentioned in her interview that the way that you gain trust of your constituents is by showing up in person and not sending a delegate, but then she wasn't here. I just, I understand she's in high demand, I understand there was a lot happening, but I think this is a very big job. You understand you need to gain the trust of the people, and not being here is a big deal. I think it's a big deal.
And the only, my only footnote to that, just for your information, spent eight years as state superintendent.
Yeah.
Similar, in a similar place, and another reason she's not here is because of their structure, and she's extremely well thought of by the chiefs.
I think there's a breakdown then, if, if she can't be here.
I'm not, I'm not defending her, I just wanted you to know.
No, but, but I, I don't, I don't think that, 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 I don't think that's proper for you to be telling us that, because we're voicing our concerns based on our opinion.
Very fair.
So what, what I feel you're trying to do is convince us, no, she, and we know she's okay. The fact remains she was not here, period.
Okay, are you going to vote, or are you?
Go ahead and jump in here and just vote.
Okay, Pam's voting.
So I have Brenda, Michael, and then I'm back here at this place of complexity between the, wait, Brenda, Michael.
Do you want to skip you again?
No, 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 because I want to say something, and then I'm going to, I'll, I'll stay with Randy. The issue, and I just want to bring this up, I mean, I understand the complexities of having to be, wanting to be in more than one place at one time, and I, I would definitely understand if this was something that had been planned forever, but I think when things come up like that, and you don't know that you're going to have an interview, it's your fin, almost final interview, and then another interview that you might or might not make it to. I mean, so it's not like she hadn't, she really had input into how the, a schedule went. And I think, when I think of going someplace, I usually have input in making sure that I'm there. I usually have input into that, and I, I just don't think that she had input into that. And then by it being, I know how flights are as well, trying to make sure that you can get from one part of the country to another.
Right, okay, before we do more debate, let's finish the, the, the count, and then we can get back to the debate. Tiffany?
Can I give Brenda my three?
Nope.
I'll do Brenda, Michael, and Janice.
Brenda, Michael, and Janice.
Randy, Michael, and Janice. Janice?
Oh, man. Yes, Michael, Randy, and Janice.
Brenda, Michael, Janice.
I didn't get the count, I missed two people.
Oh, he has it.
Okay, can you go down the list? Can you tell us, can you tell?
I'm going to, but, but before I do that, just let me do, let me do the double check, I'm just going to go quick. Cassandra, I have Brenda, Michael, Janice.
Yep.
Tom, I have Randy, Michael, Janice. Correct? Lupe, Randy, Michael, Janice. Judy, I have Brenda, Michael, Janice.
Correct.
Tiffany, I have Brenda, Michael, Janice.
Yes.
Okay, just double checking. Nikki, I have Randy, Michael, Janice.
Yes.
Michelle, I have Brenda, Randy, Michael. And Pamela, I have Brenda, Randy, Michael. Are we good?
Michael has eight.
Okay, so my count right now is Brenda has five, Randy has five, Michael has eight, and Janice has six. Are we in the same place?
Yep.
This is way too important to just let one guy appear at the table and miscount, so I want to make sure.
How many did you have for Mike?
Michael has eight.
So you have five, five, eight, six.
Correct.
Okay.
Are we good, Pam? I'm counting on you.
Who were the top three?
Well, we don't have a top three.
You have a top two and a tie.
The other two are tied.
Brendan, Randy are tied.
Okay.
So do we?
So now we can discuss.
Well, I guess, if, even before we discuss, can we, do, did we say how, can we pick the fir, the top two?
Well, let's, let's talk about that.
When you said discuss, I thought you meant discuss like the people.
Yeah.
Well, I, I can, will you want to go?
Go ahead.
I thought, I thought Michael Rice nailed it. I thought he answered the questions with a depth and with a vision and with a passion. I thought he had a great passion for kids. I didn't get the feeling like only Eric had passion for kids. I had the feeling they all had passion for kids, and so I just thought his depth of knowledge and his experience was like. And so, you know, but I also have great respect for Randy, who I know, and I know he surrounds himself with good people, and I know he gets things done, so that's why I, so anyway, but Janice, I just, my, my only concern with her is it, again, the same thing with Eric. I mean, her experience with, you know, African-American students, I'm not, it's unclear to me, which is a major issue here in, in Michigan. I, so I had some concerns around, around that and where she was coming from in that area, and just sort of her, her, Ann Arbor is a very special place, and I think of it as sort of being like a little utopia. I know it's not, but Washington County gets plenty of money for special education and other things, and I, I just don't know how knowledgeable she is about the rest of our state. And I think Ann Arbor is kind of a world in, of itself, in and of itself. So that was my concern, is that she, she needed more experience outside of, in Michigan, outside of Ann Arbor.
I, I mean, I, I don't disagree with you on that. I think, yeah, that's a, that's a valid point.
In Colorado, I don't, it didn't sound like that was that much more diver, less diverse.
Other thoughts?
They do have a lot of Hispanics, so diversity is just not a group, it's.
Yeah, but I was basing that on what she told us. She kind of like listed out the statistics, and I didn't think that I heard, I, I could be wrong. I was listening for, for diversity.
She had, she said just under 50%.
Than here.
I think Colorado Springs was, from what I, my notes say, was more diverse.
Than Ann Arbor.
Than Ann Arbor.
Okay.
At least when she was there.
The most diverse district in District 11, so.
Keep in mind, Colorado Springs does have a army base.
Air Force base.
Air, excuse me, Air Force base, yeah.
And, and Michigan has, I mean, the Hispanic community is an important community, but in terms of numbers, I mean, our, we have a much larger percentage of African-Americans and they, and concentrations of, big concentrations of African-Americans which are struggling.
In Ann Arbor?
Not in Ann Arbor, in Michigan.
Oh.
So you're, I'm just saying, I, because I think it's like 2% is Hispanic, and I know Wayne County is 40% African-American, or was until recently, so it's, the numbers are different.
Should we be taking each candidate and really marking out the exact percentage of the districts they've been at so we feel comfortable with this particular topic?
If they've got the information.
I mean, that's not necessary for me.
Because I don't want to be throwing out that we, that we think we know exactly who's more diverse.
No, because it was a bigger issue for me, and I, what, there are two things, and there were two candidates that interchange diversity, the question that I asked around African-American and raising the bar there, and when you interchange race with economic background, that, that to me can mean that you don't understand that there can be differences within those populations. So it, it, don't worry about me on that one. That was a concern for me, for her, as well as Randy Lea, is that they were not clear to me when I asked the question around what would you do for underperforming African-Americans, and you honed in only on economic factors. When, when Rice, Dr. Rice spoke to that issue, he started with economic, but then he said that that's not it, there are some other factors that, that impact that. So I do think that, that, that Janice did come back, and she started talking about, I think she talked about suspension rates.
Yes.
She talked about the eighty percent versus the two-thirds when it comes to literacy that would be left behind versus, you know, fifty percent for the overall population when it, when we're looking at some, the third grade retention levels. And I think that she, AP classes being made, more being made available for those students. So, I mean, she, she answered it someplace else, but that, that was my, those are, those are some of the concerns that I, that I have when I look at diversity, is do you understand within your diverse populations that there's, there's a difference? And, and while I'm at it, and then I won't take up the floor again, but Brenda really honed in on that, is that she understood that there is a difference between rural, suburban, urban areas, and that there are different differences in how you have to understand and inventory the needs and the gaps in those different populations, and I really appreciated that about her.
As far as numbers go, and not wanting to seem like anybody has the upper hand, I just remind everybody that my, three of Michael's votes were, would have been fourth on the first round, if he was their at least fourth or fifth choice. I'm just saying that, you know, I mean, just, just that it's not a slam dunk or anything like that.
Right. And I think, you know, to Tiffany's point, I would be interested to see if we did a weighted vote, what the difference would be. I mean, this time, we did, everyone had to pick three out of four, but if you had three votes and you could put them anywhere you wanted, would this look considerably different? Which gets to your point, Tom.
Although, I don't, you know, I don't know that I feel, I don't know that I could focus on one, because like I said, I haven't deep dove into any of the.
You don't have to.
No, I mean, if we did, yeah.
What, you would have three votes.
I'm sorry, okay.
And you could put all three of them in one basket?
Right.
Or you could put one in three different baskets? If we did it that way, would this look very different than what it looks like right now?
Yes.
Tiffany?
I wanted to go back to Brenda about her not being here. She could have said, I'm just going to put everything into Boston and put all of her time and energy there. I don't like that she wasn't here physically, but I understand, looking at different opportunities, you know, in your career, she made the decision that she wanted to apply to Michigan. She didn't have to apply at all. We have a lot of challenges here. So she could have said, you know what, I don't want to go to Michigan at all. She did not send a surrogate. She did take that time out to do the, you know, to come in with us via the video. And it wasn't like she did a taped interview and sent it either. She did it live, so that we could interact with her. So I do appreciate that. Randy, I like that he was practical and pragmatic. I like that he was well-connected in Michigan, and it's obvious that he has a lot of institutional knowledge. Again, I didn't like that he was not big on change, more just perfecting what we have. And also, I, one thing that was a red flag for me was he stated about his lobbying experience and that he pushed back in Lansing, and he kept bringing up Detroit, and I don't know if he did or didn't, I'm sure other people here would know, but I'd noticed he didn't say anything about pushing back on the emergency manager.
Oh, yeah.
Or the EAA. So he did? Okay. So that was concern for me, questions for me in that area.
But my, my, yeah, my experience working with him is that those are not things that he's, environment, he's not going to be out protesting and things like that, you know?
But as far as lobbying, and, because he was lobbying for other things, he pushed back on other things. So was he pushing back in lobbying?
He was Wayne's superintendent when EAA.
Okay.
Was in the mix. I'm not saying he wasn't as the Livonia soup, I'm just saying as the Wayne soup at that point. I think it was transition time.
Yeah, I think he was part with Vicky Markowitz, all those super, well, that's the.
He did, he did mention that he worked against the EAA bill.
He mentioned the EAA.
He mentioned the EAA, but I don't know if he said he worked against him.
Right.
And he worked at Detroit.
I'm sure he worked against.
I'm glad he, I'm sure he was. No, I'm not saying he was for it by any chance, but.
Yeah, I just don't know, I don't know him at all.
Well, we don't know any of them.
Well, you know him, right?
I know him, I know Randy.
I, I, I've seen, I know that he's, he is Brian's real good friend, and I, I learned a lot about him today, and I, I see a lot of great qualities that he has, especially, I wrote, I wrote some of them.
Well, I wasn't finished, but.
Oh, okay, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
You've met him before, I've never met any of these people before, so I, I don't know anything about them. But, um, two, I know the district, when he worked in Livonia and he worked in Wayne Westland, I know as soups, as opposed to being over the ISD, those weren't diverse districts either, at those times. Wayne Westland wasn't, it's diverse today.
Right, right, I just don't know when he was there.
But back, when, it seemed like when he was in a soup there, I don't think it was nearly as diverse as it is today. So he doesn't, I don't know that he had, as a superintendent, you know, have that experience in diversity, so.
Lupe, and then Nikki?
Okay, well, I, I didn't know, I seen Randy once, and then today is number two. And, and we went to visit with Brian, in fact, we had a board meeting in his, at Wayne Riza, and so that's how I met Randy, with Brian. And so they work real closely together. But I, what I saw today was depth in, in him, experience, knowledge. I saw, he didn't use any notes, he had his notes on the side, everybody else had their notes open, and they would be checking their notes to see that they were saying the right thing, and they wouldn't forget anything. He knew everything right here and in his heart, and he would just spill it out, and he would, he cited dates, he cited the year, he cited the number of students, whatever percentages, he cited what they were working on, and, and very much that I appreciated is that he had solutions, and he, and he would, he was able to verbalize all those things that he had done in whatever area that he was talking about. There were concrete evidence that he had gone from here to here. He has that relationship-building capacity, or else he wouldn't have all these people that are surrounding him doing all the great things that they're doing at, at Wayne Riza. Now, we keep talking about all the things that are not happening, but I guarantee you, as a teacher for thirty-six years, a principal, director, and everything else, and talking to teachers in the field, and seeing students that have graduated from our schools, our public schools, our schools that this department leads, and, and the superintendent does so much for, they are working in many respects. Is everything working? No, but we do produce, we produce all of you, all of you. Public schools produced all of us. So we are doing things, and when teachers hear that nothing is working, nothing is working, nothing is working, they get very demoralized because they work very hard every day to make things work, and they are producing. Now, is everybody producing? No, it's like everything else in, in, in the, the doctors, in the, wherever you go, there's going to be pockets, the police department, everywhere. But, but we are, so when I hear everything is dire, I, no, there's a lot of good things happening in the schools. And, and so Randy brought the depth in what's happening in the schools, and, and he has the experience of being a leader in complex, large organizations, and that could transfer very easily to the Michigan Department of Education as a superintendent. He has that, that experience working with the legislature, with the governor's office, fighting for different issues. That takes a skill, you just don't go into the legislature, and look at, Tom was a legislator, I bet you people didn't just go to you, Tom, and made you do different things. It, it takes a skill, it, it takes a courage, it takes, it takes a commitment, it takes a lot of things to be able to do that. And, and so I, I wrote a lot of things about Randy, because I was really impressed with, with his experience, with his knowledge, with, that he didn't use his notes, he knew everything by heart, and, and, and he reflected on very important things. Maybe if we brought him back and, and he reflected more on some of the, the concerns that you all have, he would tell you, give you more additional information. But as I talk to the superintendents in my area and people throughout the state about Randy, they all like him, they, they say he's a collaborator, that he's a, he's a relationship builder, he is a person that, that gets along with people, they love him as their president presently, and, and, and he just, you know, I cannot say enough good things about Randy, what I learned today, based on what I learned today. So that's my.
Great, thank you. Nikki?
I was just going to say, it is interesting to me that we kind of came down to Brenda and Randy at five and five, because I think they're both pretty similar candidates in terms of their respective districts. And I did, I thought I heard him say consistently throughout his interview how he went to bat for Detroit and the Wayne County area, so, I don't know, I just think that's interesting. I know that there's other comments out there, but that's just a thought process. And then, short, so that we move on, but I would say, if Brenda does move forward, we need to talk about some of the issues we talked about in question nineteen, which was the needing intervention in special education. She did say that she felt like educators have too much paperwork. I'm just going to throw something out there, when we talk about appeals process and fact finding, which is what she said in her interview, those two things kind of contradict themselves for me, because as a nurse, seeing twenty-plus moms on a busy day, that's technically moms and babies, forty patients, I chart on them, and at the end of the day, sometimes I feel like this is just a big pain in the, you know what? But I also feel like this is proof that I did my job, so that no matter what, we can all agree that, like, you, you, I did my job, you were cared for, and even when there's disagreement, we go back, we keep, we just keep circling around. So you can't fact find if that part is not there. And I would argue that the reason why we've come to a place in our society where that piece needs to be there is because not everybody has the heart to, or I shouldn't say heart, but not everybody follows through doing that on a consistent basis, right? So you can't fact find if you don't value the accountability in charting or documenting. So the concept of document, you know, if it wasn't documented, it wasn't done, kind of applies here, and so if we, if we move for long, I would just say, we need to address that, because they wrote that down as something that was a big red flag for me.
Judy?
Thank you. I was looking internally at three different things as the candidate spoke, obviously experience, I think, which all of us were looking at, and I was listening for instructional strategies for the instruction in the classroom. And I also was looking for how they understood leadership, not only outward leadership, but how they could look at themselves from a leadership perspective. So I felt as though Brenda certainly deserves to be moved on, so that we can dig deeper. I have some questions also, but she stood out to me as somebody who, as she looks at big problems at the state level, and she's got that experience, that she's still going to focus in on what's going on in that classroom. How is this going to affect teachers, which may have been, I'm not even going to try to guess why she made the paperwork remark, but she certainly has the experience and an outside perspective. She's not from Michigan. The candidates who were from Michigan, I fully expected them to know our systems, to be able to speak to that, and they, all three of those, I think, did very well on that. But they should have, they live here, they understand what our challenges are, because we do have challenges. We have positives, but we have challenges also. We need to stand up and start dealing with those. So that's my, my perspective on Brenda. I agree with Michelle, I thought Michael Rice was very focused in on results-based. He's, you know, built goals, he's built those goals with his board in a collaborative manner. He kept going back to classroom and what's happening within the district, business collaboratives, et cetera. So, again, I think we need to dig deeper on him to ask some clarifying questions on some things that maybe were, I noticed on the question related to local districts and ISDs, he spoke to the ISD part of the question, he did not to the local district. So I guess I would like to ask that, because the state superintendent has got to interact with all of the local superintendents, even though we have a lot of them. They all have specific needs. The other thing that both he and Brenda talked about was rural schools, because as Tiffany and I know, because we're the ones who've been through it the latest, though all of you know, we're an extremely diverse state as it relates to rural versus urban versus suburban, and the fact that both of them mentioned that, probably Brenda more than Mike, I was impressed with, and the fact that they at least have that on their radar. Janice is interesting. I was interested in her leadership style. I had never met her before, there's no question that Ann Arbor has its own unique qualities and challenges. I will tell you that personally, and this is just me, I admired her courage as the leader, and her board was with her, when she stood up and said, we're not going to have guns in our schools. And that was a long process, and that took a lot of courage on her part and the board's part, so I commend them on that. Again, I'd liked a little, little bit more about her leadership style. While I heard classroom, I didn't hear it as heavily as I did with the other two candidates. And those of you who know me know that I don't like to get into a whole lot of process, I'm a boots-on-the-ground person. And so I heard some process in there, I'd like to dig deeper and say, okay, but how does that relate to our schools who are experiencing major, major issues with achievement, or financial issues, or the myriad of issues that we've got going on? So that's where I stand on those three, that's where my votes are.
I like her personality. I could see her, like, relating well with kids, but I, I don't think she has the background as far as.
I have something else. In talking about rural and urban, Randy did speak to that, and, and he said that that was one of the, the highlights of his county. of the highlights of his county, the Wayne County. He said that it's very, very diverse and he talked about going to visit a rural school and of course, he works in the urban setting too, but he did talk about the rural and the urban schools. Also, I wanted to know if, I don't know if, you know, when we choose a teacher of the year, we get to meet the teacher of the, right there and there's a lot of interaction and with this, you know, we did see him at the end. But is there, has there ever been, when we selected or is there room, when we select that final two or whatever we select, that we go visit them on site?
Well, we have to follow Open Meetings Act rules.
Oh, yeah.
And if we did that, we would be doing basically a special meeting. And quite frankly, I don't think we can extend this process to the point where we're going to do three different site visits, particularly if one of them's in Minnesota. So, can.
I haven't said anything.
Okay.
I did like, Randy kept focusing on a good, an excellent teacher with resources. He kept saying that over and over again. And I think that, you know, ten things are interesting, but they, you know, if you, if nothing is, if everything's a priority, nothing's a priority. That's the saying. So, I really do think that if we had a state where an excellent teacher with excellent resources were in front of students, we'd have a good district. I mean, we'd have a good school or a good state education, sorry, it's late, education system. So, you know, I really liked that he just kept kinda hammering that issue.
There were three things he would say all the time.
And then I also think it's interesting that, from what I can tell, if we would've voted for one candidate out of the four or two candidates out of the four, the votes, we'd be, it'd be a different conversation right now, but we're doing it the way we're doing it, but anyway.
So, I'm gonna say something now. I kind of echo Judy's comments. What I like about Brenda is, one, she has the experience. She's done it for the last eight years and I think has shown really good results. I mean, they do quite well. And I think that there's something to be said for new thinking coming into a state, particularly a state that has seen some pretty significant declines over the last several years. A couple of things that she said that I really, really appreciate was, one, the testing mechanism just isn't working. And I really appreciate her thoughts on that. And, you know, I think she's very much aligned with us on that philosophy of education. So, that's Brenda for me. What I, the one answer that Michael Rice gave that I thought was just spot on was his reaction to the top ten and ten. You know, he said, he thought it was a good plan, but he also talked about, you know, the fact that we're ranking ourselves against other states and we don't really know what it is we're ranking, which makes complete sense to me. And then, you know, that we should maybe think about, you know, is that the best thing for us to be doing is trying to rank ourselves with other states? So, I really appreciated that comment that he made. I thought he was spot on on the most critical issues that will be facing us in the next three to five years. And also his opposition to the A through F letter grade, I thought was fantastic. So, those are my thoughts. And I saw a couple more hands go up. Tiffany?
Yeah, I have a question. And I don't want people to think that I'm negative, but I do, I'm not afraid to look at the negatives and I'm not afraid to talk about the negatives because we can't get better if we don't face those things. And I'm not blaming teachers. I'm not blaming any one person. So, I wanted to make that clear. But I do have a question. I can see with Kalamazoo, they do have a lot of positives in that district. With Wayne County, and that's a much broader space with a lot of different communities, but that is one of our areas that definitely need improvement and he's in leadership already. I don't know, I didn't really hear where he did some magnificent things that have turned around in those areas.
He said sixteen percent increase in the graduate rate for African-American males.
Is this for, oh, he had like tons. He said every long-term goal they met. Every long-term goal they met.
Well, I'll say this, that stood out necessarily, I guess, because we're getting so much information in and that's why I said, I wish we could play back the interviews. We're getting so much information and I'm trying to jot down as much as I can. Matter of fact, I think that he, what I said, he interviewed well and his resume.
When you say his, can you be specific who you're talking about? Randy?
For Randy.
Okay, thank you.
For Wayne County, yes. But then that doesn't explain how Wayne County hasn't turned around. So, I would like, I mean, I want feedback. I'm, you know, not just saying it to, I would like, you know, if somebody knows.
Okay.
Because I don't know.
Lupe?
The reason why I was talking about visits on site is because of things that we have heard about different candidates and to me, that's very vivid in my brain. And I, to me, there's two very important things, well, actually, three, in the person that we select. It has to be a people person, somebody that is relationship building, has to be somebody with experience, leadership and the right fit. The right fit, the right fit. That's extremely very important because this person is gonna work with the department, is gonna work with the legislature, the governor, all the stakeholders, and most important, is gonna move the needle for our students. So, having said that, you know, I, all of these things that I have heard and read are vivid in my brain and so I am feeling that this is such an important, and I know everybody feels the same way, it's such an important position and we have to choose the person that's the right fit for this job.
Yes.
That still doesn't answer my question, though. If anybody knows any specifics because Wayne County is still in a lot of trouble.
My question, I don't know what we're arguing here.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I'm not arguing anything.
No, 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 no. I'm just, I'm lost in where we are in the process. I don't know if we're comparing Randy to Brenda or if we're.
Just examining that the county that he's in leadership of already.
I'm not speaking to you. I'm just talking about the whole process. I'm not sure what we should be doing.
Let's let our consultant.
So, part of this conversation probably is absolutely necessary so you're able to at least discuss some of your thoughts or questions about candidates. And you begin to crystallize for those that are coming back what it is that you wanna make sure you explore. So, it's certainly not a waste of time. It's just been a very long day for all of you. So, there are certain things that some of this is speaking to. Michael Rice has eight.
Has what?
He has eight. It's eight, six, five and five. You pull Michael out and put him into the two or three and then decide how you want to, so do you wanna take the three and pick two? So, all I'm trying to do is help you get to, you're gonna have to get to a conclusion.
Yes.
And so, if you took, if Michael's in, and I'm not saying he is, I'm saying if he's in, that leaves six, five and five. You could take those three and do this one more time and pick two. And that'll at least really start, that I think actually, and Tom, it starts to get closer maybe to where you want it is to be quicker.
No, but.
So, that's a suggestion process-wise that'll bring some sense of moving you much closer to a decision.
Okay.
Okay. Now, yeah, that's fine, you know, that's what, but we took Randy out. He had more, he had a higher number. We took him out and we didn't take him out, we put him in a bunch. Now, you want us to take one out and then leave the other bunch.
We took one out. We took the bottom one out last time.
No, but Randy had more and we took him, we put him in the pile. And now, we're gonna take this one out because he has more and proceed with the others. So, so, no, that's not fair.
So, can I just, here's what I would suggest. We did a scenario where we picked three out of four and I am, I am interested to see if we did a weighted vote, what that would look like, because I think it would change significantly. I need to say something to you. Okay. And then, my bigger concern is that we, our discussion has been very productive. It's, we're very transparent and open. Everybody can see and hear what we're feeling, what we think. But I'm unfortunately afraid that some of the things that we think and have said are not actually true based on what the candidates have said with their percentages, their this, their that. You start making votes like this right now, like we're doing, and you can go back and see, that's the whole benefit of being sharpened by the transparency. Now, we can't go back. So, if we, I don't know, I just, I just hope that we were, we're making it based on, you know, facts. Okay. Then, what do you suggest? What would you like to do? I think that if we've narrowed it down, I think we need to ensure that we have fact find, done some fact finding based on the interviews today, gone back and made sure, you know, if I'm gonna pick Randy Leepa or Brenda over this particular fact or percentage or whatever is actually true.
What do you mean by Wendy?
And I know that that extends the process, but that's, that's the whole purpose of transparency. It really sharpens our decision-making, make sure that when you walk out of here, when we all walk out of here and we say, well, we made this decision because of this, and then they go, we go back and, well, but that's not actually true. And we know media has access to facts. We should access them ourselves too. So, when you have, when we have opinions and thoughts that we're sharing and discussing out loud and then we make a decision thirty seconds later, I'm just throwing it out there that I think that the process of transparency, being an elected board, being accountable to that, there's more to this right now.
Well, can I say, I think, I think that's a good point, but I think if we can narrow it to three, it's up to us to vet at that point, the final three.
And we can help you with that.
Yeah, and we can look up the facts. We have our notes, we have their CVs, we can, and that's our job, to find out the facts.
So, here's a question. Randy Leepa does not, just as a theoretical possibility, not making any statements, doesn't make the cut because we thought, whatever. We go back and those are not the facts.
Well, I mean, I guess it's a risk.
And then we vet, I'm just saying.
Well, I guess there's a, I guess there's a risk that people were lying or wrong, but I don't, I don't, I'm willing to, for me, I'm comfortable with giving them the benefit of the doubt and making a decision today based on what we know, we've gathered so far. And I know that the group did some vetting of them as well.
You got to weigh it on a fair amount.
Yeah, so, so I would, so I'm comfortable basing it on their answers that they gave for me and then.
But none of us are really sure. Sorry, I'm not trying to.
I don't know if it'll ever be a hundred percent sure.
What if we did this? What if we said, who's our least great to move forward? And if we have a majority of one person that we're comfortable not moving forward, then we don't have to keep arguing about the other three.
But I would like to say something in defense of Randy, the idea that he hasn't turned Wayne County around. He's only been there for four years. It's an incredibly, we've got Detroit, you know, my hometown, where there are, you know, I'm faced, I've been faced with for the last twenty-five years, the issues. We've had emergency managers, had our school board taken over. We've had all kinds of things that have affected the whole county in terms of turnaround. It is coming around now. Now that, well, since he's been in place, since our board's been in place, since we've got a superintendent, I see, and I'm sure you see people, I mean, I see positive things, but it's gonna take, we have been Detroit, we were good back, you know, the numbers were good, the enrollment was good back in, you know, in up to nineteen ninety-nine and then the last.
And I graduated from Detroit High School, you know, public schools and I did a tour with Dr. Viti this month and I went to state of the.
But to say it's up to Randy Leepa to turn the whole county around.
Okay. Here's what we're gonna do.
You very well could do what you just suggested, if you choose to do that.
We can do that or we can revote and I'm willing to change my vote slightly, which I think would, might alter this. So, has anyone changed their vote that would alter this?
In a way that we may cancel each other out, but. I'm not just saying this, but.
What do you mean? Do you change your vote?
Well, let me just ask this. You have somebody who has.
What do you mean? What do you mean, Cassandra?
I will change my vote from Janice to Randy.
And I could have changed mine from Randy to Janice. So, but, I mean, can we take Michael out?
I just want us to get to a consensus.
At least Randy doesn't help because then we still have two at five.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, are we arguing Randy against Brenda?
No, we have five.
These would be Janice and Randy. You're either gonna go one way or another. You're either gonna figure out who drops or you're gonna do a process that gives you three at the end. I mean, I don't know what else to tell you.
Let's see, is there a candidate that we can drop?
Or that we could keep. What about one that we can keep?
I think Michael Rice is a keeper. I think we've voted for him and I think he's clearly in the, should make the final round.
I concur.
Well, if I change my vote, if I change my vote.
He still has seven.
And you just, whether you change him or not, somebody, I mean, we gotta keep.
We gotta drop someone, so.
My person got dropped, so, you know, people are gonna get dropped and I didn't, you know, continue on, we deliberate, I mean, we talked about it, but after that, okay, you know. So, let's just vote. I really already stated too, that I have one person that I'm really even interested in diving deeper and I wish there was a bigger pool. So, I would like to just vote.
Do you wanna vote?
We've talked about it at this point, I guess.
On the three then.
So, we're picking three again?
I thought we were voting two.
You either take Michael out and two out of three.
No, but we vote on the three.
You vote for one to drop or you vote, or you vote three out of four.
So, we keep Michael Rice and then we vote on the other three?
Yep.
Yeah, you pick.
And you pick two?
I pick two then.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you wanna do that?
We didn't do it the last round. Why would we do it this round?
I know, I know.
Randy last round, why would we do it that way this round?
Yes, that's my problem too.
I'm just saying.
Because this is what we did three years ago, four years ago.
Okay, so then are we gonna, there's two that are tied at the bottom, so when we take one out, are we taking the one out that's tied at the bottom? Because that's how we did it the last time.
Well, you could do that. You could take the two fives and just pick one. I mean, that's an option.
No, but we didn't do it like that last time.
Yeah, we did.
And you got rid of Eric.
He was clearly the bottom, though. He was a three.
I mean, we took.
Well, yeah, but then we voted, we put Randy back in the, in the pile and he had more votes.
This is not fair. You guys voted, you know, we all voted before, somebody got cut. That's part of the process. We need to vote again.
The problem is, right now, we don't have one specific person to cut because there's a tie.
Yeah.
I would recommend that maybe we, maybe we revote and see if anybody's changed after all the discussion we've had, because we've had a lot of discussions since that last vote.
Right.
So, I mean.
And we have to choose three?
Yep.
Three out of the four.
Oh, wait a minute. Three out of four.
No, no, we're gonna vote on the four, right?
Correct.
The four.
We're voting on Michael.
We're gonna vote on the four.
Yeah, just, I mean, see if anybody.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
Yeah, I mean, after all the discussion.
Got it.
See if there's.
Oh, so, Tom, you're saying.
We voted on the four again.
But when you voted on the four last time, it was, what three did you wanna move ahead? Are we doing that again?
Yeah.
I just wanna be clear.
Just to confirm the vote.
Just to see if there's been all this discussion, if anybody's changed.
That's fair. All right, Tom, you wanna start? I just went back around the other side of the table. You went that way.
All right. Michael, Janice and Randy.
Hey, Lupe?
Randy, Brenda, Janice.
Brenda, Mike, Janice.
Brenda, Mike, Janice.
Hold on, we're gonna. Tom was Randy, Michael, Janice, correct?
Yes.
Lupe was Brenda, Randy, and Janice, do I have that right?
Correct.
Okay, now we go, I just, it was a mess up in a column, go ahead, Judy.
Brenda, Michael, Janice.
Tiffany?
Brenda, Michael, Janice.
Nikki?
Randy, Michael, Janice.
Joe?
Brenda, Randy, Michael.
Pamela?
Brenda, Michael.
All right. By count, right, oh, Cassandra, I'm sorry, Madam President, Madam President.
Brenda, Michael, Janice.
That means Randy's out. Seven for, is there seven, there's seven? Yep.
So Randy goes.
Yep, that's what it is, right, you got seven, seven, six, and four?
Yep, six, four, seven, seven.
Yes, thank you.
Not in the same order, that's why.
Yeah, six, four, seven, seven, you're correct.
So who are the top three?
The top three are Brenda, Michael, and Janice. Tom?
I think Tom's.
Okay, I can't open.
Okay, so based on that score, it's Brenda, Michael, Janice. Are we comfortable with this?
No.
I do think, like, I think Randy has a broader, I know it doesn't make a difference, but I, I, just has a, a depth of knowledge. And his experience in finance is what we need right now, but, but I accept the decision of.
And if you want us to do any more assistance on deeper dives, Nikki, if there's certain things in those three that you want to.
I didn't say anything today at the table that I'm, I'm afraid of, is not going to cross-check into facts based on the interviews. I have no problem with my decision. But if everybody else feels like the reason why they made their decision and they said things today, don't cross-check, and that could impact your, or change things, then I would recommend doing that.
So tight for me, anyway.
They're just all good candidates.
Yeah, that's true. Everybody has qualities and strengths. It's just what, what weighs out for you, what's your priorities or whatever.
A good and a bad thing. Yeah, and Randy is doing well in, in the Wayne County position, so, not like he's leaving that.
Well, I, I am not, I, I am feeling that, that we don't have the right fit in, in, in these candidates. They're all good, they bring a special perspective, but I don't feel that we have the right fit. But, you know, if that's the will of the board, then we have to live with it, whatever happens.
What happens if we decide?
I'm not done yet, I'm still talking. So, so, you know, when we have to live with this, we have to, to think about all the students and the department. And, and we have to think about the governor, the legislature, the stakeholders, and everybody else that we're making. These decisions is not just for the board, these decisions is for many people. And I don't think Randy should be the person to, to leave. He's got the, the, the most experience and, and has worked with large organizations, and, and he's got those qualifications that, that this department needs.
What happens if we decide after the second interviews that we are still not?
Uh, we would have to do the search over again.
Yep.
And we did it in Grand Rapids, we just did it in Grand Rapids, we didn't find the right one, so we opened it up again.
No.
When does Boston make its decision?
That's the answer, that's the.
When does Boston?
Most likely next week.
So I would just ask, and that if she is selected and accepts.
That two.
That we bring Randy, since, since he got the most votes the first time around, that we bring him and add him to the third.
Well, that's fine. And what we should have to do is offer him the opportunity to come back.
Right, that's true, yeah, but I mean, that if, if she withdraws.
Do we have a motion for that, or?
Yeah, we would need to do a motion.
Okay, go ahead, Tom.
I, I would make a motion that we move forward Brenda, Michael, and Janice. However, if one of them withdraws before May seventh, that Randy be put back into the.
Be invited back.
Be asked, be asked to, to be brought back in.
I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
I just want to say that, I mean, it would be good for us, us, if he would accept that, and we just can't expect that he's going to do that, and we would hope that he would.
You, you've made it very clear, and everybody's gonna be able to see this, how, how close everybody is, and the respect that you have for all of them. And I think you've done an extremely good job with that, so I don't, I can't, I don't, I'm not speaking for anybody, I don't really know them except for phone calls. I don't think anybody's gonna be offended if that were the case.
Would hope.
I, I can't guarantee that Pamela by any stretch, but that's my hunch.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I would like to say that the process of all of this, just the transparent nature of it, I mean, just listening to the candidates talk about how, you know, anytime you make decisions, you have critics. I'm sure when we leave today, there will be critics about, gosh, did you see the mess of that process? But the truth is, this was not a mess. This really is, the deliberation behind closed doors that we oftentimes do not see is probably pretty similar. And I know you've told us in the past that our board works pretty well together considering the diverse nature of who we are.
And how long each of you have sat here?
Yes, so.
Goes this far.
It just feels like, you know, almost like it's really helpful to see inside sometimes and know that this is actually, this is what it looks like.
That's an excellent point, Nikki, thank you for making that.
And it's not personal towards anybody, we're just.
And again, every candidate was phenomenal, I mean, this was a really, really hard decision.
And I wanted to thank all the other board members for their honesty.
Oh, I know, I know.
Not being shy about telling their feelings, and I think that makes it a better process, so.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it.
Congratulations, congratulations to all of them.
Good job, everyone, yes, Judy. Can I ask a question here? The next interviews, the questions. And that process, because I certainly heard from Tom, and I know I've had the same, where I'd like to say, yeah, but.
Yeah.
Would you go a little bit down?
Another set of questions from us, the first time. I was also expressing a conversation, I had, Cassandra, you may, this time you may really want to look in and make sure there's certain, have you heard them, that there's certain questions you want to make sure to get asked? So your editing may be a little more, you know, a little different, a little more, have a different flavor to that. That's all fair game. So, again, by early next week, we will send.
Well, but I, we're not saying that, we're saying something different. I think, if I, if I may, I mean, we're saying that we would like it to be much more free-flowing, with the proviso that if I don't try to, if I ask too many questions, you can shut me up. Because I could, I, this is like, I want to really get into understanding, like I said, I mean, I don't know these four very well, I'd really like to get into it. And I think the fairness issue isn't as big of a deal because, and I don't know if they want to flip a coin or whatever, because they're, because I'm not gonna ask the same follow-ups. So there, it's not gonna be the second and third's gonna have an advantage over the first. Because based on what they say, if we can, you know, and I'm willing to take twelve hours on the seventh, if that's what it takes. I mean, if we, if we're gonna come out and hash this out, I want to really have a deep discussion with these candidates, and go back and forth, and.
The only thing I would beg on all that, Tom, is that there's some sense of consistency.
Yeah, I don't.
Well, we don't have a framework of like four questions or even eight questions, where we each add one, but just instead of twenty-four, and then have more space to do follow-up.
Right.
That's fine, just as long as there's some consistency with what you started, that's all I'm getting at, so you run on it, yeah.
So I've taken some notes of overarching themes that I saw come about from this. And so what we could do is, is have questions that are overarching themes, that allow more time to, and have far less, like, I would say, ten questions, that allows for some give and take.
We'll, we'll, we'll give you a shortened version for starters, and then you have.
Okay. Okay, so as soon as I get that, I'll take a look at it, I'll send it out to you guys, or Marilyn will send it out. And then, again, if you have specific questions, send that back to me, and I will compile them and send them back out to you.
We gotta be careful with Oma, because I mean, if you're gonna.
You're gonna send it to me.
No, but you're gonna send it to us.
Marilyn's gonna send it to you.
Be real careful, I don't know, I, whatever, I just want to make.
We're not deliberating anything, we're sharing information.
Are we narrowing down, deciding the questions?
Uh, if you have specific questions, you will send them to me only, and I will compile them.
Okay.
And then Marilyn will send them back out. So we're not deliberating anything.
What if, and then when we get them, what are we supposed to do?
Review them, and if you still have changes you want to make to me.
Please.
Okay.
It's the same process we use this time.
Okay.
But please make sure you send me your questions so that we're not making them up the day of.
I'm gonna wait till the day after, and then tell you.
Thanks again, Michelle, I appreciate that. Any other comments by state board members before we wrap up this meeting?
Can we, I would just say, can we agree that on the seventh is, I, well, I don't know if we have to agree with this. I think it's the most important decision that we make as a board. So I really, literally will stay twenty hours, I mean, I, I don't, time is not of the essence to me, I mean, I will stay as long as it takes. Now, I, I don't, doesn't mean that one person like myself can ramble on and ask forty questions, so you can certainly guide that, and I defer to the president on that. But I really, I look forward to really getting to know and understand, and, and put people on the record, quite frankly.
Okay, so, future meeting dates, Tuesday, May seventh, will be the next round of interviews here at nine thirty AM. Tuesday, May fourteenth, is a regular meeting, the State Board of Education, also in this room. And then Wednesday, May twenty-second, will be the board retreat on MSU's campus in Lansing.